Everybody sit quiet. Call the meeting to order, Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase.
Present.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan is here. Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to color guard presentation?
Color. All. Right face. Add a close arm and a bow. Just right, just. Ready, cut. Carry. Out. Ready, cut. Present. Out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry. Out. Ready, cut. Order. Close. Ready, cut. Right face. Add a round step. Forward march.
We'd like to thank Stafford High School's Navy JROTC. The cadets with us this evening were Cadet Andre, Cadet Dubois, Cadet Griffin, Cadet Corn, and Cadet Zachary. And the instructors of this JROTC program are Lieutenant Commander Felix Martinez and Senior Chief Sky Shaw. And I have a note here that Lieutenant Commander Martinez will be retiring in June, but that's only if we accept that resignation, right? He wants to retire. Thank you for being with us this evening. Okay. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Mr. McCosker. All in favor? Please say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion carries?
No.
Oh, okay. Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passed.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to awards and recognitions. We'd like to recognize Ms. Karen Bingham, Assistant Principal of North Star, for presentation of awards.
Good evening Chairman Kent Up, I'm sorry Chairman Healy, Vice Chair Chase, members of our board, and Dr. Kizner. Tonight we are so excited to introduce to you a young lady from Stafford High School. Ms. Brianna Fitz, will you come up and bring your incredible teacher, Ms. Arnie, with you? I'm going with you. In January, we sent out a request to Ms. Linda Arnie and her students in the Photography and Graphic Design II class. And we asked and invited them to design our new North Star Early Childhood Center logo. Well, we really received some incredible design submissions, but one stood out above the rest. And tonight, we are very proud to introduce to you and recognize Brianna, who designed our new official North Star Early Childhood Education Center logo. And she's brought that with you to share with you tonight. Go ahead, you can hold that up. We are really rewarded with such a wealth of student talent here at Stafford County Public Schools. And we are so proud that our new Early Childhood Center logo has been designed by one of Stafford County's own students and one of our Stafford High School Indians. So would you please join me in congratulating and recognizing Brianna's incredible talent as well as the talent of her teacher, Ms. Arnie.
Great job, Brianna. Next, we'd like to recognize Mr. Greg Daniel, Principal of Colonial Forge High School, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Kizner. I am pleased to announce that Catherine Nguyen, a freshman in the CGS program at Colonial Forge, competed in the Virginia Commission of the Arts State Finals for Poetry Out Loud Competition on March 15th, 2019, and was selected as the state champion. Catherine competed with nine other regional winners chosen from an original field of 7,800 high school students from 54 public and private schools across the Commonwealth. After three rounds of a tough competition, she emerged victorious and will compete for a national title in Washington DC on April 30th through May 1st, 2019, at the Lissner Auditorium on the campus of George Washington University. A live stream of the competition is available through the National Endowment of the Arts website, www arts.gov. Catherine is a wonderfully talented young lady who works very hard, and we're incredibly proud of her. This is not, this is just one of the recognitions that she will certainly be, certainly have as we follow her over the next four years. At this time, please join me in congratulating Catherine Nguyen as the national champion for poetry.
You will.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize Mr. Joseph Lewis, Principal of Stafford High School, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Kizner. I am pleased to announce that Catherine Nguyen, a freshman in the CGS program at Colonial Forge, competed in the Virginia Commission of the Arts State Finals for Poetry Out Loud Competition on March 15th, 2019, and was selected as the state champion. Catherine competed with nine other regional winners chosen from an original field of 7,800 high school students from 54 public and private schools across the Commonwealth. After three rounds of a tough competition, she emerged victorious and will compete for a national title in Washington DC on April 30th through May 1st, 2019, at the Lissner Auditorium on the campus of George Washington University. A live stream of the competition is available through the National Endowment of the Arts website, www arts.gov. Catherine is a wonderfully talented young lady who works very hard, and we're incredibly proud of her. This is not, this is just one of the recognitions that she will certainly be, certainly have as we follow her over the next four years. At this time, please join me in congratulating Catherine Nguyen as the national champion for poetry.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize Mr. Joseph Lewis, Principal of Stafford High School, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Kizner. I'd like to invite Paul Cle, Principal Architect from Gremlin Parker Architects, Joe Lewis, Principal from Stafford High School, and Bryce Queen, Project Manager from the Facility Planning, Design, and Construction Department, to come forward. As part of the Stafford County Public Schools Energy Management and Sustainability Programs, Stafford County Public Schools has adopted the U.S. Green Building Council Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Sustainability Standards for new school construction and major renovations, or better known as LEED. LEED is a certification program for buildings and communities that guide the design, construction, and operations and maintenance towards sustainability. It's based on prereqs and credits that a project meets to achieve a certification level, either certified, silver, gold, or platinum. I'm extremely proud tonight to announce that the Rebuild Stafford High School project is the second major Stafford County Public Schools' capital project to earn LEED certification. The Rebuild Stafford High School project achieved a certified certification, only three points shy of silver certification. Key accomplice, key accomplice achieved by the project include water use efficiency, optimizing energy performance, construction waste management, improved indoor environmental quality, and innovation in design. Achieving the significant milestones would not have been possible without the support of you, the School Board, and the Board of Supervisors. The superior design from our partner, Gremlin Parker, and the construction management from the contractor, Hess Engineering and Construction. However, what made this certification happen was the key leadership provided by our own Principal Joe Lewis and the superb project manager provided by Bryce Queen. So I would like to take a few minutes to let Mr. Cle speak.
Thank you, Scott. Madam Chairman, School Board Members, Dr. Kizner, thank you for allowing us to present this award to you. The glass plaque can be mounted in the school, as well as you will receive multiple certificates for framing as well to showcase this recognition. And if I could, read you a letter from the U.S. Green Building Council, that's the organization that organizes this whole effort. This letter is written to Dr. Kizner as well as you, the School Board Members, and it says, "Greetings. On behalf of the U.S. Green Building Council, I congratulate you on achieving LEED certification for Stafford High School. Your project has achieved certified certification under the LEED 2009 Schools Rating System with a total of 43 points. LEED certification identifies Stafford High School as a showcase example of sustainability and demonstrates your leadership in transforming the building industry. In honor of this impressive achievement and in appreciation of your participation in LEED, we are pleased to present you with the enclosed certificates as well as the glass plaque. This letter was written by the President and CEO of the United States Green Building Council, so congratulations to you."
Just to remind you, our photographers are Stafford High School students.
Great. Good job, guys.
Thank you. That concludes our awards this evening and brings us to staff reports. Item 5.01, the pilot bus program at Winding Creek and Park Ridge Elementary Schools. Dr. Kizner?
Okay, well, if you have any, come up and steal. We actually have a pretty simple recommendation, but we'll walk you through the process on how we got this recommendation.
And I seem to be missing a mouse.
I have some friends with me tonight, some of my colleagues. We have Becky Wardlow, Principal of Winding Creek. We've got Kenna Butler, Principal of Park Ridge, and of course Barry Suddeth, our Partner in Transportation, to share the report tonight. We just wanted to give you an overview summary of our pilot program this year. And we're going to start with sharing just a reminder of our rationale for the pilot. This was sent out to the School Board last spring when we wanted to present this pilot to the School Board. And, you know, essentially there were four goals that we had, and we're going to look at these more. I'm not going to read through each one of you, each one of them right now, but we'll go into them in a few minutes and look at them from a different perspective. But essentially, a more consolidated school day for students, a larger window of time for teachers that would provide them time to do staff development or work in vertical teams without having to supervise students while they were waiting to come in or leave school. A more efficient way of transitioning students into their school day in a shorter amount of time. And the possibility of more parents actually choosing to ride, have their children ride buses, we hoped would help alleviate some of the congestion that we were having, particularly at Winding Creek. And just a note that due to Winding Creek having a larger geographical area, Winding Creek was selected to go first because I believe, Mr. Suddeth, they had some outlying homes that they had to get to. So just geographically, it made more sense to have that school start earlier. So just a review of some of the changes. Of course, our standard school day is 9:00 to 3:40 for all of our elementary schools. And what we wanted to do was adjust the time for Winding Creek to begin earlier and for Park Ridge to start, to go a little bit later. So our folks at Winding Creek would be picked up a little bit earlier than traditionally picked up. And then those bus drivers would then come to Park Ridge so that they would start their day, and everyone would only have one bus load. So you see some information there. Winding Creek's day, the target was 3:15 to 3:25 to pick up. And Park Ridge, the target was 3:50 to 4:00 o'clock to pick up. And so, we kind of have divided this into a focus in those four goals. The first one kind of seems to be really targeted at our students. And if you look first at Winding Creek, we wanted to achieve less waiting time, which we have some good indications we're doing. In 2018, 2019, essentially, we had dismissal at 3:15 with our last bus departing at 3:35, as compared to last year dismissal 3:40 to 4:15, which was about 35 minutes. And we reduced that, you know, as you can see in the following year, this current year. In Park Ridge, we had dismissal at 3:40 with the last bus actually departing about 4:15. This year, dismissal's at 3:50 and departs at 4:10. However, that, you have to remember, the school day starts later at Park Ridge. And also, as Ms. Butler was sharing, that there are less students there during that wait time. So before, I believe Ms. Butler had said about 80% of the students were still in the classroom. This year, about 50% of the students remain in the classroom. So, and it is a shorter window, and again, they start later. Of course, we have one bus load benefits in the AM for both schools because there's less downtime, less transitioning time to the school day. We also were looking at more professional learning time for teachers so they could work with colleagues, they would have more time for staff meetings, and wouldn't be so rushed because they were still supervising students at the end of the day. And both schools have reported that staff appreciates that additional time to devote to planning and professional learning. They're supervising students for a decreased amount of time during that wait time, and that's coming and going. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there are less students during that time if they're supervising them. And I'll let Mr. Suddeth talk for a minute or two about the benefits from his perspective in transportation.
Well, from my perspective, it is a better, it's a more efficient use of our resources as far as, if you'll notice, and I know all of you got the list, we still have 28 double loads out there. And if we were to try to make those single loads without adjusting bell schedules, that would turn into 28 drivers, which that's hard to come by now, and 28 more buses. So by staggering the schedules, we're able to use the same resources to get the same job done and not increase. And it makes sense. I have polled, or have looked at other school divisions that are growing, like Stafford's are larger school divisions. And this is the way they're handling it with the tiered bell schedules.
And then finally, from a parent perspective, we're hoping that parents see some less congestion at Winding Creek in particular. Ms. Wardlow noted that she passed out, I believe, 350 car rider numbers last year and this year. 350 last year, 275 this year. Of course, that's not a direct correspondence as to who drives every single day, but it gives you an idea that hopefully more people were invested in feeling like the bus came home at a reasonable time, which wasn't the case before. And finally, we've seen some positive indicators for, you know, all of our stakeholders, student, staff, transportation, parent, community. We do have some efficiencies we want to continue to work on. We've already had some improvements since the beginning of the year. I know that, you know, we weren't quite meeting the target exactly at the beginning of the year, but we've definitely gotten closer as the year has gone on. We'll continue to work on those on-time departures. We do have new attendance zones now, which we're hopeful will make a difference as well. And at this point, we would just request that the board would allow us to continue exploring this another pilot year, and hopefully we'll learn even more so that maybe we would consider implementing that in other schools in the future.
Questions?
Questions?
Yeah, I do. Thank you so much for this summary. I appreciate it. So I did get a lot of emails from parents from Winding Creek as well as Park Ridge, and I know you did the study with the community, parent community. Did a survey go out to them?
So we did kind of two different things. You know, I guess I would say, remember that we were right in the middle of redistricting, which added an element that made it somewhat difficult to maybe get the hard data that I know that you were really looking for. You know, we did some softer data this year. We're happy to do more, you know, you know, that harder data next year for you. I know Ms. Wardlow had conversations with different neighborhoods and got feedback as different neighborhood groups. Ms. Butler had, I think it was a book there, Ms. Butler? And she just put out paper, you know, notices to give feedback that was very positive. You know, she didn't have, obviously, whole-school response. And she also sent out a Google survey to her staff where I would say two-thirds of the staff was, you know, very much in support of continuing. There were definitely some suggestions for improvement that we're going to look at.
Okay, great. And then, one more question. When you, this question was for Barry. When you mentioned the Winding Creek covers a larger geographical area, for next year, is it going to be the same? Because now you have that Embry-Mell community coming in, so.
Right, and it's still going to cover, it comes out to Route 1. And so, and that was what really held us back on that. And then, you know, there's a little bit of a, we say it's Winding Creek and Park Ridge, but I have route coordinators who work absolute miracles with what they do. And not all the buses service both schools, so they're pulling from different schools to make this happen. And so, that's what makes it work. But yes, we're still covering a pretty big, pretty large geographical area.
Okay. And the only other one I had was, I stood on that corner, and this was for Ms. Butler, on that corner across from the library where the buses were backed up all the way to Mine Road.
Right.
Is that still going to continue, or is that going to get any better? Because that's the second load that you're talking about, that parents were complaining that they don't get home until 5:00 or 5:30 sometimes. Not sure if that's true or not.
Right, was there improvement with that this year, Ms. Butler?
After the buses got worked out, at the very start of the year, it was pretty backed up. But once we realized that one of our buses was coming too far across the county, transportation fixed that situation. And that bus was no more riding out of my building, so that problem was solved. So we've been doing pretty good since the latter part of October, early November.
Yeah, yeah, okay, it's nice to get the feedback.
There were rolling pains, we expected that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
My question was the same as your second question.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Ms. Hazard?
I guess this is more an overall comment. I know the board is looking at ways to improve the workday for our teachers, and I think that's one of the big things. Because the complaints that I get, one of my schools has five double bus runs. So I know people are leaving 4:45 and later. And that assumes that Route 17 is moving somewhat Friday afternoons, we understand that. So, I mean, I guess my broader question is, can we do these in other areas? My concern, though, last year, I looked at what last year's double bus runs were, and there were 28. And I understand there's 28 this year. Well, we removed seven, and then we had to add these seven back in. So Widewater got four. I'm just saying, I don't want to fix something and eliminate double bus runs to then have to add them, because that's what it looks like to me, is we had 28. And I'm not arguing with the program, based on one from last year, we had 28 bus runs as of March 16th, 2018. My hope was, we implemented this, we would remove, it looks like, seven, which was Winding Creek and Park Ridge, which were seven, and then they ended up being picked up, four at Widewater. So I'm just saying, I like the program, but I want to make sure we're not sort of using the program to then give double bus runs elsewhere.
And trust me, that is not my intention at all with this, because I want, as much as, yes, sir, as much as I would love to see every bus pull in right on time, it's not going to happen in Stafford County. You mentioned one of our nemesis with Route 17, but.
Route 1.
Yeah, Route 1, but it is, we would not draw down from another school. What we would do is take them in zones and figure it out so that we would not do that.
But that's just.
And that's valid.
My poor board knows that I want you to have more buses and bus drivers. I really want that in this budget, but I'm willing to stand down. But this shows to me, though, we need to have them, because I think that this is not just for our students and stuff. I think it is actually something we can offer to our teachers, because there are some teachers, depending on their commute or whatever, who might like a later or earlier time. And I think that this could be an additional benefit. But I would be remiss if I didn't say, we did this, eliminated seven runs, and then we had to add seven more elsewhere in the county. And Widewater for four, Rocky Run for five, and Kate Waller Barrett for four. That's a long day. And, Mr. Suddeth, no, this is not directed at you. I think this is directed at our board of what are we going to do with that to give you the resources to be able to help fix that, so.
I was, I've got to go back and look at my numbers, because I, I'd like to see the spreadsheets you have. I need to.
I'll send you the email. It was from you.
Okay, thank you. Because I want to check that, because I don't, right, okay. I just want to double-check that, because the last thing I want to do, and the folks who I work with down there at Transportation will tell you, I've got, one of our supervisors, Barbara Lancaster's here tonight, and she's been a big help in spearheading this thing with me. And. somewhat Friday afternoons. We understand that. So I mean, I guess my broader question is, can we do these in other areas? My concern, though, last year, I looked at what last year's double bus runs were, and there were 28. And I understand there's 28 this year. Well, we removed seven, and then we had to add these seven back in. So Wide Water got four. I'm just saying, I don't want to fix something and eliminate double bus runs to then have to add them, because that's what it looks like to me, is we had 28. And I'm not arguing with the program. Based on the one from last year, we had 28 bus runs as of March 16, 2018. My hope was, we implemented this, we would remove, it looks like, seven, which was Winding Creek and Park Ridge, which were seven, and then they ended up being picked up, four at Wide Water. So I'm just saying, I like the program, but I want to make sure we're not sort of using the program to then give double bus runs elsewhere.
And trust me, that is not my intention at all with this, because I want, as much as, yes, sir, as much as I would love to see every bus pull in right on time, it's not going to happen in Stafford County. You mentioned one of our nemesis with Route 17, but.
Route One.
Yeah, Route One, but it is, we would not draw down from another school. What we would do is take them in zones and figure it out so that we would not do that.
But that's just.
And that's valid.
My poor board knows that I want you to have more buses and bus drivers. I really want that in this budget, but I'm willing to stand down. But this shows to me, though, we need to have them, because I think that this is not just for our students and stuff. I think it is actually something we can offer to our teachers, because there are some teachers, depending on their commute or whatever, who might like a later or earlier time, and I think that this could be an additional benefit. But I would be remiss if I didn't say, we did this, eliminated seven runs, and then we had to add seven more elsewhere in the county. And Wide Water for four, Rocky Run for five, and Kate Waller Barrett for four. That's a long day. And Mr. Suddeth, no, this is not directed at you. I think this is directed at our board of what are we going to do with that to give you the resources to be able to help fix that.
So.
I was, I've got to go back and look at my numbers, because I, I'd like to see the spreadsheets you have. I need to.
I'll send you the email.
Okay, thank you.
It was from you.
Because I want to check that.
It was from you from March.
Right, okay. I just want to double-check that, because the last thing I want to do, and the folks who I work with down there at Transportation will tell you, I've got, one of our supervisors, Barbara Lancaster's here tonight, and she's been a big help in spearheading this thing with me. And that is one of my goals and has been for six years, to get those buses in and get them out and get, let the teachers.
And I'm supportive of all that. That's not what I'm saying, but I'm just saying, it was concerning to say, I'm hoping we are moving in the downward direction on double bus runs. As you know, I think with growth, I think that we're fighting a losing battle, but, sorry, board. But I do think that's something we need to look at. I would really like to see what your suggestions would be for the next one or two to pilot in the future, because I think it's something we really have to look at. And five bus runs, four and four, we have, you know, a lot of, that's a lot of kids.
So yes, so request to pilot a second year, I'm okay with it. Barry, they're treating you okay? I just want to make sure everything is okay.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Okay, if you have any problems whatsoever, please let me know.
Okay.
You could go through Dr. Kizner, but you, yeah.
You haven't been going down to Spotsylvania.
I just wanted to make sure.
No. Snooping around, I saw you down at Spotsy.
All right, just checking.
All right.
All right, well, that brings us to, no other questions. 5.02, the fiscal year 19, third quarter financial report.
So are we going to extend it for another year?
Yes, I said I'm okay with that. That was my show, so.
And also, who's going to be next? Where are we going to implement it next?
Taking action.
What's the plan? We don't need to.
There was no action here.
Well, this is a pilot program, so I don't believe it. Unless there's somebody on the board that wants to put it on for a formal action, I don't think, I don't hear any objections to continue.
No, no, just an additional. You just go along and.
I just needed the information for, I was just looking for the constituents. Thank you.
Oh, no, now it's me. Uh-oh. I'm back.
Good evening. So I'm going to, just like every quarter, go over the quick highlights of where we stand financially. I'd like to just do an overview of where we're at with our enrollment, which does ultimately impact our state revenues, which is a big driver in our budget. So I like to point out every time that there's a difference between our ADM and our enrollment. But as a reminder, we had 28, 934 as our budgeted ADM. Our September 30 enrollment, 28, 905, our, and that from September 30 to March 34 has gone up and down. And these are, the March 34 one is definitely an unadjusted enrollment number, and we are currently in the process of finalizing our ADM with the state. And after that ADM number gets finalized, we'll have a lot clearer picture on where our state revenues are. And our, obviously, our local revenue from the county typically doesn't change between beginning and end of the year. And our other miscellaneous revenues that do not include the county transfer are pretty minimal, but they're on target. As far as our expenditures, overall, are tracking, are tracking well. As far as salaries and benefits overall, we are expecting a savings area at the end of the year, and they're currently trending below budget, projecting approximately 1% in savings, just like the caution that we still have, but depending on contract lengths, four to six months of payroll left. So those numbers are, as we get closer to the year, become more definitive, but they are still rough numbers at this point. And health insurance and benefits are always a hot topic, and overall, our health insurance costs are trending a little bit higher, not necessarily out of whack with budget, but just pointing out that some of that's as we increase staff and add them on, that's obviously more folks that jump on to our health insurance, but the employer portion, exclusive of obviously the employee holiday that we did, but the employer portion has run a little bit higher, trending a little bit higher, and, but I will continue to monitor. I just want to touch base on our funded contingency. So as you know, each year, we start with $500,000 as a funded contingency for unforeseen issues. And so a couple of items that we actually have transferred in there lately in the third quarter were savings that we told you during the mid-year second quarter review, that our legal fees were trending below budget. And so I still left some in there to cover, but I actually transferred $75,000 out of our legal fee line into our funded contingency. And also, I mentioned during the work session that at the end of FY '18, we had savings, and the board approved to go ahead and buy two of the buses from FY '19 ahead of time that would free up money in FY '19. And so we transferred those savings into the funded contingency line. The transfers out of that have been various over the years, but predominantly are for the contracted services that for unfilled compliance required positions, mainly psychologists and some of the other student services positions that have exceeded the FTE amounts that were budgeted, and other unexpected repair projects. For example, we just recently had to do, replace an electrical line at North Stafford High School. And so I've attached the quarterly report as well as the Board of Supervisors report. I'm not going to go through the Board of Supervisors report, but I attached it for your reference. So I will just briefly, does it every time, touch on this. So our total budget was $289.6 million. Obviously, the adjusted budget doesn't change. That's what has been appropriated by the local government. And don't get too caught up on the percentage realized to date. We like to show it, but we do have trends during the year. We spend a lot at the beginning of the year, and then it kind of flattens out as we ramp up for the year, and then as it gets towards the end of the year, sometimes there's various spending. I do want to point out the funded contingency that I pointed at, or that I mentioned in the PowerPoint. So on the second page, we have contingency that is unfunded. That's the first line on there. That started out a million, we have 381 of that. That ultimately means we have to have additional revenues come in in order to use those funds. So a lot of that typically is our insurance proceeds for, if we, last year was a big year, we've had some this year, whether it was water damage and things like that, if we have insurance claims come in. We don't budget for that. So as the insurance claims come in, we then disperse to fix that project. And then the funded contingency is what I mentioned during the PowerPoint to show that we started out with 500. We currently have $231,000 left in that. And ultimately, we'll be coming back to you guys pretty soon to talk about what the final year-end savings will be, and then come into the board on how we want to move forward with this.
Any questions for Mr. Fulmer?
Just one. And I'm sorry, I'm embarrassed to ask this. Adopted budget is what the board adopted, and then adjusted budget, can you explain that again?
So you had it right. So adopted budget is what the board adopted, should tie out exactly to the budget book? And then the adjusted budget is just budget, it'll take into account all budget transfers we've done. So on the revenue side, you'll see a big jump in our state funding and our county transfer, and that's because of the $1.4 million that the state went up, and the local transfer was adjusted there after we adopted a budget.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you.
It brings us to citizen comments. Before we read our traditional blurb, is there anyone who wants to comment? Nobody signed up. Okay, well, we'll read it for you. Dr. Chase.
Sure.
Come on down.
Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the board. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allocated to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kizner, I'm Al Watkins from the 314 Hope Road in Stafford. It was my pleasure to attend the budget work session earlier this evening. Was pleased to see that a viable and well-thought-out revision to the school budget had been considered. I have a few comments regarding some of the discussion that took place. Regarding the potential for having some mid-year money available, I would like the board to strongly consider one of the options that hadn't been suggested, which was to fully implement the compensation study for the Stafford 331 employees who are slated to get half of what they would ultimately get if it was fully implemented. So I would like you to consider that potentially, that $500,000 that would be necessary, should it become available, that you consider utilizing the money for that purpose. I would also like to remind you that in fiscal year 2010, that according with the teacher's scale, that particular year, there was no raise until the very last paycheck of that fiscal year, when a pay increase was included at the very end of the year, because money had not been available prior to that. The other comment is regarding the summit, and there was some discussion regarding the survey that took place when the summit was done these past two years. I would like you to understand that that survey were done at the very end of the summit, when the participants were invigorated, enthusiastic, and looking forward to implementing everything. But there never has been any kind of a follow-up survey that's been done. I would recommend that some sort of a survey be done so that you might be able to see how the people who attended the summit were able to potentially utilize or implement any of the strategies that they had learned at that time. I think that would be much more important if you're considering having some kind of a summit-type event in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the citizen comment period, come to the board reports. Are there any board committee reports?
The Fab met last evening, but I think we have covered most of that with the work session beforehand and with Mr. Fulmer's report, so no other comments.
Okay, any other committee reports? No, seeing none. We'll come to the superintendent comments.
I know I will disappoint you, but I will defer for any comments today and just save it for the next meeting.
Okay. It brings us to the consent items. Do we have a motion for consent?
Motion to approve five items of consent, 901, 902, 903, 904, and 905.
Okay. I think we have a motion by Ms. Hazard and second by Mr. Decatur. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. That brings us to action items. 10.01, approval of the 2019-2020 Stafford Head Start and Early Head Start refunding, and COLA application for $2,604,803, including the philosophy, policies, annual self-assessment, annual plan, and goals and policy council bylaws. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Mr. Decatur. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Ms. Massey, if you want to stay, and Ms. Bingham, you're welcome to, but otherwise, I think you all are done.
You tomorrow.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll join you tomorrow for the federal review. 10.02, approval of the 2019-2020 Career and Technical Education Local Plan and Budget. We have a motion.
Motion to approve 2019-2020 Career and Technical Education Local Plan and Budget.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Young, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 10.03, approval of the 2019-2020 Annual Plan for Special Education. Do we have a motion?
I move that, oh, go ahead.
Ms. Decatur.
And I'll second.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Decatur, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? We studied all these at the last meeting and in between, so. Good job, Dr. Kizner, no questions on these. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. 10.04, approval of change order number one, a contract extension to ABM Industries using budgeted FY '20 annual operating funds in the amount of $3,998,392.84 for custodial service for the period of July 1, 2019 through May 31, 2020. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve item 10.04.
Motion by Dr. Chase, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Ms. Healy, sorry, give me just a second. I guess I thought this was FY '19 funds, but I guess we can expend the 20 funds even when we don't have.
Well, this is for a change order for the, it doesn't start until next year.
Right, okay. Sorry, I just got lost on my.
It starts in FY '20.
Okay, sorry, I just had to clarify it in my mind. I just want to make sure we weren't committing a budget or, okay, sorry. My mistake.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, 10.05, approval of proposed changes to the 2019-2020 school year calendar. We have a motion.
Motion to approve proposed changes to the 2019-2020 school year calendar.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Young, second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion?
Just one comment. In the future, and I like how this was done, and I know that Mr. Nichols reaches out in the past, just reaching out maybe to our SEA leadership, they've been such a partner with us in general, it's always nice to have their take on it as well. Sometimes in the past, that's just been useful to us on a variety of topics. I think they were fine, but it's always great if we have that second part. So I was just going to suggest that, just going forward, but I will be supporting this change.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 10.06, approval of two changes to the 2019-2020 Low Incident Class placements. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve 10.06, approval of two changes to the 2019-2020 Low Incidents Class placements. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain from this vote because I was the no vote on moving any of the special classes. So I don't want to vote against it, but I'm not going to vote for it, so I'm just going to abstain.
Okay.
So, yeah, hi. So I obviously didn't approve the agenda. A little concerned that this went straight from superintendent's comments to action and skipped information. I understand that there is a need to let the students know where they are going to be placed, but I do think that we kind of skipped a very vital part of the process by putting it straight on for action. So that was my reason for not voting to approve the agenda. As far as the approval of the two changes go, I understand that the parents have been contacted and they are comfortable with moving, and so for that, I am very thankful. I won't be supporting it this evening because, again, as I stated last time, I just strongly believe that this was our opportunity to place students based on their best interests and not where they fit. And I'm disappointed in the process, disappointed that we didn't have this information. I doubt it would have changed anything, to be perfectly honest with you, but I do think this information would have been vital to the redistricting decisions. And I understand, again, that the parents are okay with staying put. They were also okay with moving, so to me, this kind of says, parents with, you know, children with very specialized needs, they just want their children to be educated the best way that they possibly can. And I know from experience, sometimes those parents will go with the flow because they are concerned about the level of, not care, but, you know, instruction that their children will be given. So again, I'm just, I'm disappointed, so I won't be supporting it this evening, but I do have great faith that these children will receive a terrific education regardless.
Yes, Dr. Chase.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that I was fortunate enough to get a tour of the New Moncur yesterday, and just, I absolutely agree with the comments that my fellow board member has. member has made, but speaking with the principal of Moncur, I know he's very appreciative of having additional space in the school with opening, and so logistically, that's why I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Hazard?
I, too, I agree with Ms. Decatur. My concern with this, as I have stated before, and I went back and I looked in the meeting minutes, and I'm basically going to say what I said at that meeting. When we built Moncur, and I hope as we build every new school under our specifications, we really looked at, and this was prior to, of course, North Star coming onboard, but we had put aside two pre-Cape classrooms for childhood, early childhood, and three self-contained. Yes, these rooms can be used for other things, I understand that, but at the time, and looking back on those specs, a lot of time and effort went in there of trying to make sure we were building schools for the students of tomorrow, and I really believe that special education... I am very thrilled right now that North Star is opening, but as we all know, it is opening potentially at full capacity. So these rooms may still be needed in our future, and so the concern for me, and why I will in the end be supporting this, is because we have now taken five classrooms that were going to have a lower number of children in them, and now having five full classrooms that will be utilizing the cafeteria, the gym, music, the library, and everything else, which to me means we need more teachers at Moncur to meet those needs. I don't like when, even my high schooler starts lunch at, I don't know, 9:40 or 10 o'clock in the morning. I really know that the rotations, when you have a large school, believe me, Margaret Brent was it for a long time while I was there, when you get to seven-day and six-day rotations and having to get through lunch lines, we built those schools to accommodate a certain number of kids with this kind of capacity envisioned, and I am very concerned about the strain we are going to be putting on those other areas. I continue to argue that we need another AP at Moncur at a minimum, because I am not sure we are ready to meet those needs, although I know, Dr. Kizner, you've said that we have, but I can't not state that. I am concerned of that. I believe that this information would have been very useful, and when the board is voting, capacity has to be done correctly, and I am unhappy that it was not done beforehand, and we have to fix it now, when we've already said to parents, you're moving, you're not moving, you're not... I think that's on us, so I think that's something we need to improve. I will be supporting it, because obviously, I... Part of me actually doesn't want to, because I don't want to overburden the cafeteria and everything, but if my parents have been contacted and such, I will support it. I am not happy to support it, because I don't think it is the right decision, and I think we are going to overburden. I would really love to add on to this, but I was defeated before of saying, I really want an assessment and a plan for Moncur and its staffing, because to meet these needs.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard and Ms. Young.
Yes, I, too, visited Moncur yesterday, and I, excuse me, I have great faith that Dr. Kizner, with his background in special education, will ensure that the students will be taken care of, not only at Moncur, but at Falmouth and any of the other schools that need resources. So I will be voting for this.
All right, any other comments? No? All right, we'll... All in favor of the motion to approve the two changes to the 2019-2020 Low Incident Class placements, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
And any abstentions? Okay.
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
Abstain.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
And if your motion passes.
All right, that brings us to information items. 11.01, approval of the nomination of the Virginia Star Program at Brookpoint High School for the Virginia School Boards Association Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award, and authorization for the school board chairperson to sign the nomination packet. Yeah, and there has been a request that this be moved to action tonight because of VSBA deadlines. Ms. Egan, do you have a motion?
I just have a question. Why would this need to be approved by the board?
It's, I think it's a VSBA requirement, because anybody can't just nominate. It has to be the school board.
Okay.
This is, the school board is making this nomination, I think you can only nominate one program.
Got it.
You know, per division.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I would move to put this on for action this evening. 11.01, motion to move first.
Second. Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Dr. Chase, to move this 11.1 to action. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve 11.01.
Okay, now it's 10.07.
I'm sorry, 10.07.
10.07.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Egan, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next information item is 11.02, approval of the high school student fees for the 2019-2020 school year. This will be coming back to us at the next meeting for action.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
I'm just looking at the fees, and I just want to make sure, I looked at preschool tuition, and I was a little confused, is that the high, is that the North Stafford preschool? Or what is it? I just...
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Is that preschool school?
The preschool program in North Stafford High School.
Is that for all year?
I thought it was...
$120?
I thought it was free.
Yeah, and it's full, Jackson couldn't get in.
Yeah.
So I thought it was free.
Yeah, or $10 a month.
Self-sustaining, yeah.
Probably cost you more than that to charge that money.
So I thought it was free, but if it's not, is it free for the disadvantaged, the ones that can't afford it?
I would have to look into that, I cannot give an answer this time.
I don't know why I thought it was free. Okay.
Well, you're probably thinking of the peer...
No.
The peer positions.
No, I was at that one. This is the one right next to North Stafford, I don't know which one I'm talking about.
All right, so when the students run?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, any other questions? All right, off the hook, Mr. Nichols. This will be coming back to us for the, for action at the next meeting. If we don't get any questions or issues about this, is it all right if we put it on the consent agenda? If anybody, you know, wants to bring it in for discussion, just, you know, send an email to our clerk, and she'll get it to Dr. Chase and I before we set the agenda. All right, 11.03, revisions to the student transfer policy and/or regulation for elementary schools. Again, we're only talking about elementary schools right now. Dr. Kizner?
All right, so... I'll just touch on the highlights, I know you can read the red. So what we're recommending is for the 2000, the current approved transfers, as long as the person who received the transfer can show documentation that they're still meet the criteria in which they were approved prior, that we honor those transfers. Okay, so that's number one. Second, for the two, the upcoming school year, with the exception of staff, staff, their transfers would still be honored like we have honored them in the past, unless there's a hardship case that we do a one-year, and I think this is what I was picking up from listening to the board, a one-year moratorium of not approving transfers, again, unless there's a hardship case. And the other parts, just want to clarify this issue that was discussed last meeting, I think in the work session. When we say transportation, if your childcare is in that school zone, and the bus comes by, we transport you, but if you live outside that zone, we don't pick you up and take you home outside the zone. It's just transportation that...
Why are you in that zone?
That would be in that elementary zone. There are some logistic changes on the dates, based on the new calendar, and then looking at different policies that you all got last meeting, we're recommending, and just that the superintendent or his or her designee, that's the final appeal, okay? You know, we don't want to take you guys coming to having to do the appeals. So I'll turn to my number-one team there to see if there's something I missed, but that kind of summarizes where, what we're recommending. So for the current people who transfer, we will seek documentation that they still meet the criteria in which they got accepted. All staff could continue to follow the transfer. I think there's a percentage, what's the percentage we use? For schools, for closed schools.
Well, that currently we're seeing this... We're not going to approve any.
Ninety percent, I think. Yeah.
For other areas, for middle and high, we're seeing ninety percent of design capacity. For elementary, next year, what we're putting is there would be no transfer requests approved, except for those three reasons, hardship cases and children of employees.
Okay.
Dr. Chase, she started first, we'll go to you next.
Okay, yeah, so I just, in reading the policy, and maybe I misunderstood, I, reading the number-three item, beginning in 2020, 2021, school year, student transfers will have an annual review to verify daycare placements. I just thought we were just going to have an annual review for everything, so if you put in a transfer, it's understood that it has to be reapproved every year, that it's not a given that when you transfer your child, that they will get that transfer for the entire time that they're in elementary school.
Yeah, I think that's accurate, I think that's how intense.
Okay, because it doesn't read that way. It reads that it's just if, if we verify your daycare placement, but there may have been another reason, and the school could suddenly become closed. So if the school became a closed school, you might not still be able to go to that school. It was my, was my thought of what the board's intent was, but if that was not the intent, then, then I will certainly let that go, but that was just my thought.
I agree with you. One thing we discussed, and this is certainly, we can change that, was if they're there for an extreme hardship, which is like a social motion, it could be many different types of hardships, the odds are very high they would stay. So that was what we were thinking, there weren't that many. They're not there for a curricular program like at a high school and stuff like that, but we can do however you'd like.
Ms. Young?
If the question, if my comment or question is the same as Dr. Chase, we did not rehearse this at all, but my question was, the current 2019-2020, when do you do that review? Because there should be a yearly review, that's what I assumed. So when is this reviewed? Because I know we're planning, you're planning on reviewing it on the current criteria?
Yes, and as we speak, Pat Jurech is working on that now.
Okay. Okay, so we're not waiting for them to call us and say, hey, I changed babysitters. We're actively...
She is starting step-by-step, so it takes a while, because remember, it's just a one...
Perfect. I'm done, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Decatur, did you have anything?
I do. There's, there's a small, select group of students, possibly student, I don't know, that are kind of waiting for this to be approved, to know where they are going, and as I understand it, there is still some confusion with in-county employee transfers. And I want to make sure that I am correct and that we are on the same page. That has been taken off the table, correct? So because this is on for information, it doesn't sound like we can move it to action, because there's some, there's some, some things going on. I would really like to request that any in-county students of teachers who are perhaps waiting to know where they are going based on this approval, can they please get notification that they are safe to stay where they are after this evening?
So if I could just take it a step further, and I understand you have your protocols and procedures, and I know I've, I'm learning that I've been violating it, but that same courtesy we want to give our staff, I would also like to give the parents, because we have open houses scheduled.
And field trips for the students.
Right, and I just, again, would, and I, you know, I'm, I guess I'm a slow learner, I'm willing to admit it publicly, after eight months, still getting used to our school board process, I'm not saying it's wrong, it's just that we have a lot of procedures to get something approved. And I came here tonight hoping, unless I heard a majority of the board saying, no, we don't like this, that we would honor the two, the people that are there, so we could notify those parents to go to the field trip.
Or not.
Which most likely, they won't have to go to, because they're already going to be at that school.
Right.
But the parents might be saying, okay, if my kid's not going to be approved, then I want them to go to wherever they would be going to. So I would hope, so you are right, the school board last meeting made it very public, this was never attended for staff, and we'll reinforce that again, but I would like to take that further and work with the current families, so they could get some closure on this, that my child will be at this school, because they already have a waiver.
Thank you.
So, so we talked about this yesterday with Dr. Kizner, to make sure that, sorry, that we get the information out to all parents as soon as possible? So what can we do?
As soon as possible would be great, like tomorrow.
Right, okay, so what can we do now? Because this is needed.
Well, I don't see Mr. Nelson here, but my understanding is that our policy says, you know, we have to be a certain number of times on if we're changing a policy. Now, some of these things, we may have a practice, but this is a policy and a regulation, but we, I thought, I thought we told people that it would be on for information tonight. I don't, I don't recall exactly, there's been so much about this policy.
Well, and so you might not be aware, there are certain people who are receiving letters saying your student that will be moved for next school year, but they're like, well, wait a minute, I'm a teacher, I thought we, the teachers were safe, but they can't get an answer, because the policy hasn't been approved yet. So it's red tape. So I think what I hear, Dr. Kizner's...
Did we send a letter out?
Well, we never said anything about teachers next time.
I know that letter, that letter did not give any impression that they were not going to be approved. I think it's just, anxiety is the fear of the unknown, people just not want to get some closure on this, and I would hope that you have an, a mechanism where the board could override their policy by taking...
Why don't, why I don't see our...
Well, but also, there's nothing on here about the, I, there's policy 2013, there's transfer 2018-19 net effect report, and there's non-resident transfer students, there's not, there's nothing on, I don't know.
It says for next year, everybody except staff and extreme hardship. Says, if you look at 2103...
I don't have any problem as a board, you know, we're the governing body for the county. I have no issues with, and I understand the concern when Ms. Healy is, and it's a good concern, but I have no issues in light of the redistricting and in light of the short summer, where we have to spin up this, this 20, 29,000 kid. I have no problems making a motion to, in this instance, moving this to action if the superintendent and the staff give me the up.
Well, I would like to at least take a look at the policy.
Could we go on board talks now?
I mean, I don't, I, I support this completely. It's not an issue of me not supporting it.
No, I know.
I just don't want to, I want to make sure, if Mr. Nelson were here, I'd ask him. So I'll turn to you, Dr. Kizner, do you have the, the policy that's...
Pull up policy.
I'm not hearing any objections.
I asked Ms. Wall to print it for everybody, since it was added today.
Policies tab.
Ms. Healy, while everybody's looking, I might feel differently if this, if this attachment had been on this agenda item when the agenda was revealed, but with, that it was added today at noon or 11:00, for me, I can't vote for that, because that is no notice to me. Now, I understand if it had been in there and people had some opportunity, I might feel differently, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but for the people that this impacts, they couldn't even read it unless at noon today, they happened to know that we amended the agenda. I might feel differently if it was released on Thursday, I might, but for, for that, I also, for the conditions for student transfers, paragraph one, student transfers requests are approved until the completion of the sequence of the grades, unless otherwise stipulated or factors necessitate the revocation of the transfer. I'm going to have a hard time voting for that tonight, because I do believe that all transfers need to be reviewed on an, on a annual basis. If we have a school that all of a sudden explodes, we have no recourse.
Can you, can you specify what you mean by that? Because you were on, you were on television.
If we have a school that either is at ninety percent, or we think it's going to be ninety percent, and it goes to a hundred percent in August, when we get the kindergarten class to register, I, we need to be able to close that school and say to somebody, you can't come in. And if we have... can't come in. And if we have sixty students here who say, well, I came in kindergarten, I'm going to be there the whole time. I truly believe that transfers have to be reexamined. I agree with Mrs. Cale that those that are done for special education, those kinds of ones, I am not talking about those. I am talking about more convenience ones. And those, I think, that I think we have to look at every year.
Well, that's what Dr. Chase, I'm sorry, but that's just what Dr. Chase commented, and I thought Ms. Young said she agreed. Ms. Decatur?
No, I just want to clarify, because it sounds like you guys have some concerns, and I'm on board with your concerns, I'm not asking us to move this, this policy to action this evening. What I'm asking is, can we allow Dr. Kizner some leniency to notify our employees that their transfers, their student transfers will be safe, basically? There, they, some of them have received letters stating that they are going to be moving, and they don't have any clarification and to...
I, I think it's a soft letter that just says...
Let's let Ms. Decatur finish.
No, no, it's not. I've spoken with specific teachers, and I, I'm, I'm trying not to go into details here, but...
The letter regarding open house, et cetera.
So...
Just went home tonight. Again, only thing I'm saying is, I have no problem giving that courtesy, making it very clear, send an all-staff meeting email tomorrow. I'm just saying that, as already stated, this redistricting has caused a lot of disruption, anxiety in people's, you know, if we could get some closure to families, I would like to do that. Because I'm not hearing really any significant or substantial change, some clarification. So, you know, I, I, I just, that's on, that's my only intent.
Okay, I, I do have a question, and I have a concern, but it's probably going the wrong ways, or as you may be concerned. But I have a concern with saying, no new elementary student transfer request will be approved for this school year. We have some schools, and I mentioned this before, in the Rock Hill district that have space. Now, if people want to transfer to the schools in the Rock Hill district, that only frees up space in other schools. So why would we not allow transfers, you know, for schools that there's, there's Garrisonville, Rock Hill, and, and Margaret Brent?
I agree with, I agree with that too.
And Garrisonville has a particularly high number of transfers in. There are a lot of daycare providers in that district. And I have, also have a concern saying, if you're, if you're there now, you're okay, but sorry sibling, you can't go to that daycare. Because you, these families may be with daycare providers for decades.
Hey, let me tell you something. Everything you said, I actually philosophically and actually agree as a leader. We try to capture the sentiments that we heard last meeting. So just to go to your question, the school board...
So we can change it?
This is, yeah, you could change it. Suspension of policies. The policy of the board is subject to suspension, amendment, or alteration upon the majority vote of the board at a regular or special meeting. And the proposed suspension amendment alteration shall appear before the board.
Okay, so anyway, I, I'm, I'm going to withdraw, I'm going to withdraw my, because I, like Ms. Decatur, it looks like we have some issues with this. However, policy 1105 states that, except in cases of emergency, and I, I looked at this as a, an emergency situation where parents were getting misinformation about our redistricting action and then the short summer. I just, I, I view that as an emergency. It says, except in cases of emergency, policy recommendations shall appear twice before the board, once for information, followed by a second for adoption. So I withdraw. It looks like we do have some issues on this transfer, and, okay.
But there's nothing to stop us from having Dr. Kizner send something out to the, to the parents, saying that the school board was going to make, adopt the policy at the next meeting. However, at the school board meeting of this evening, there was no objection, and, and if this is incorrect, you know, pipe in, please, no objection to the proposed policy as it relates to employees, students, and students currently on approved transfers.
I think that's perfect. Let me just ask you to please get...
Is there, is that any objection? I mean, because that's really, what we're looking about is brand-new transfers that somebody might want to just stay at their school and not move to where they were redistricted to.
I, I would, yes, I would just ask if there's a consensus on your last statement pertaining for new transfers. Because, again, to go back to the drawing board, write something. We, we thought we captured, if I remember, I told you Pam was taking minutes from the last conversation, and this is what the policy came from, the comments that we heard. So...
You didn't hear me, Ms. Cale, I guess.
No, about your, the three schools.
I'm just teasing.
Yeah, so I'm, guess I'm just saying, in order to put something forward to meet...
But that, that's, that's a good suggestion, that, that we're look, the changes that we're looking at in the policy are with respect to new transfers for the, the next school year. That there is no intention of making a change to the current policy, well, excluding the, the staff, because that, that wouldn't really help. But certainly, anybody on a currently approved transfer, there's no intention of making a change, and there's no intention to make a change with respect to staff.
In light that you don't adopt a new policy, doesn't the old policy stay in place?
Well...
Yeah, the, the old policy stays in place, and that's why my question was, because there's some thing that you're supposed to review it yearly, I just wanted to make sure that they reviewed it yearly, which is the current 2019, 2020, am I correct? Twenty, yeah, policy, right. So you, you said you're doing that right now. So this policy is for the upcoming year.
Mr. Rush is, is checking them as we speak.
Okay.
But remember, it will take time.
Correct.
Because it's one person plus a part-time person doing this.
I get it, I get it.
And may I just add one thing, because I, Ms. Hazard, for what you were discussing, and I certainly understand what you're talking about, if a school gets crowded or past ninety percent or whatever. We do have under the first paragraph, universal considerations, schools, grade levels, classrooms, and programs may be closed to transfers by the superintendent or designee when actual or projected enrollments meet or exceed the determined thresholds for capacity.
My concern with that, though, is I believe most parents are going to focus on, they are approved until the completion of the sequence of grades.
There is, there is a minimum of ambiguity, and most likely a conflict in those statements.
And I think that that is a difficult one to, for us to reconcile, if that is, if this board's general consensus is that we want to look at an annual review basis, I think that that language is problematic for me.
And we can take that out if, if you all wish.
That's, that's condition number one that needs to be revised.
So let me just maybe make this suggestion. We're going to make it clear that, I'm not, that people who have a current transfer, and we're going to work to try to verify the information we have, that they should not have to worry. That's, put in simple terms. We're going to get you something way before next week's, a two-weeks meeting. And if you could then make whatever changes with an understanding, we're going to try to get to a consensus agreement and then forward it to the board, and then, and then your vote.
Do, do we need a work session to look at it so that we could vote? The, the date? No, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I just needed to know.
Because otherwise, we'll end up right here again. I just want to make sure we don't...
Because I, I have to be honest with you, at the last meeting, some messaging was, no new transfers, nothing. And now we're hearing, well, why not?
Well, I invited transfers to my schools.
Yeah, so we, we want to make everybody happy. And, 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 look, I was like...
Too late for that.
I think, I just think we don't want to make it so draconian, and I think that's the word I used the last time we had that conversation.
And I think, and I think I actually said something.
And can you also address Ms. Decatur's concern, which, you know, I, I think it was...
We're going to let the staff know tomorrow.
That we, it, there is no intention to change the policy with respect to staff employees. But meanwhile, I think we do need to, to look at this. I mean, is this board saying, no new transfers, except under here? Because I, I, I mean, I know, in my district, there are daycare providers, and they have been providing daycare, literally, you know, my child is now twenty-five, and her daycare provider, she actually lives in the Hampton Oaks district, but she's still doing daycare. And, and you do daycare for families, you know? And, and if, if we're not going to, we're going to say this, the current transfer student can stay in, what if they have a sibling, a rising kindergartner? You know, that's, that's something I think we need to think about.
So may I suggest, Madam Chair, that we just email, Missy, our concern, like situational, situational concerns of all the board members, and, and, you know, Dr. Kizner just goes to work.
All right, but...
We'll get you something by, if you could get this to us by the end of tomorrow, we will get you something by Friday.
I, I don't know what I, I got a head start meeting tomorrow.
Okay, if you get it to us by Thursday, two o'clock, we will get it to you by Friday.
I think the one, the one thing, is the board comfortable with, what is the percentage below that we would allow tran, is it eighty percent, eighty-five? What, what is it? I think that's the thing that the board would have to, I, for some of you who saw, what I was floating around was, I picked eighty-five. But if it's eighty, you know, something like that, for those lower schools, I will somewhat, you know, defer to Mrs. Cale. But I do want us to be very cognizant of a school that today might be at eighty-two percent, but in four years is ninety-eight percent. That, I just want the policy to make it very clear, we are talking annual review, and you may get into that school, and I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but just, you are somewhat rolling the dice, I think I've...
At risk.
At risk. I think, Ms. Healy, you know, I shared with you sort of my thought on the siblings, so I kind of have covered that. I will share at least that language. The board may or may not go with it, but I felt there was some leeway there. I agree.
Yeah, I, I just don't like this none, you know, that's, when, when there's room, when there's room in some of the schools.
And maybe room for a while, then.
Well, could we, could we maybe get consensus that we could, should write a policy that would consider transfers next year beyond the hardship cases and staff? Because I think that, to me, is a little change from what I heard two weeks ago, just being honest with you.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I mean, I'm...
Also, I do think it's a limited number of schools.
Right. I mean, I'm okay with that at a school that's below eighty percent, probably. But anything higher than that, then I'm probably going to have a problem with. And then I would probably also, and I would probably still have it at your all's discretion in terms of grade levels, right? Because we had a discussion about how, yeah, school might be at eighty percent, but adding that one or two transfer students suddenly means you need a new teacher in fourth grade.
Fifth grade, right.
I, I have a problem with the percentage being high also, especially in my districts, because this is where, you know, it gets high pretty fast. And like, right now, some of them are high. So originally, Ms. Hazard and I, we talked about eighty, eighty-five, but I will go even lower. Eighty is fine with me. And then there are some schools that are open, they could go in there. But personally, I want, I wanted all my schools to be closed for the year unless there's hardships, and you could determine what those hardships are. Because these are schools that people want to get into, you know?
I hope, I hope all of our schools are ones, but I would think for purposes of this policy, for this limited time being, why don't we name the schools that will be open as opposed to using a percentage? That would be my suggestion.
Okay, I'll start.
Garrisonville and...
Rock Hill and Brent. There is room in all three of those schools, and if people want to come to those schools, that will only help out some of the other ones.
Are we going to name them as a board sitting right here, or are we going to leave it up to the discretion of the superintendent and the, and the principals, maybe?
I second that.
Okay.
That's fine. I volunteered. You got my...
I just need all the data tonight, Dr. Kizner, to figure this out for you.
I know, we were doing so well.
Chris, Chris Fulmer and Tom, and they'll all be answering to me tonight.
This is a discussion we need to have.
All right, all right. Anybody, what, you gave us till Thursday? You said, you don't have to get it to us Friday. We're not meeting for two weeks.
When is that next meeting, by the way?
Two weeks. Oh, oh, you mean, you should see, Missy gives me all these to read.
I'm sorry.
Four twenty-nine.
Oh, God, no, it's okay. I was just going to thank you for agreeing with me at least once this evening.
I heard twice.
Oh, okay, we don't need a budget work session, but we do need, we do need to have a special call meeting, correct, to, to approve, or duh-duh, whatever it is. On, on, it's six o'clock. Does that work for you, Ms. Egan?
When?
I mean, it, it's, since we don't need a work session, we could set it later if that would help you.
Which day?
Okay, six o'clock, next Tuesday, April thirtieth. Well, hey, you know what? And we have a special call meeting. You want to put the transfer policy on. Let's do that. And if we put the transfer policy on, that'll, that'll move it up faster and make people sleep better, right?
Madam Chair, are you saying that you're canceling the tentative work session on Monday, and...
Unless anybody's dying to have it.
And the regular work session on Tuesday?
I don't think we need it.
Well, let's call it a work session. Oh, and special call board meeting.
So on Tuesday, there is a...
We're going to have a special call board meeting. Do we, we don't need another work session, do we? No.
We're going to have all the information you asked for, Chris, right?
So, can we, so, so, so let me ask a question. Can I ask a question? If we, if we don't need, we only need a special call meeting to approve the budget, and then if we do our homework on the transfer policy and send it in, send the information and all that we need, can we then, should we be able to approve that then, too? Move on it?
We'll put, we'll put it on the agenda. For some reason, people object, and we'll just move it to the next meeting.
Okay, because then that would be good for me, because I'm not in the country, and I could be on the call for both.
Okay.
Be on for both, okay.
All right. Then we have a student discipline on May ninth, which is not open to the public. A tour of the new Moncur construction site on the tenth at 5:00 PM, for those who want to go. And the next board meeting is on May fourteenth at 7:00 PM. And that brings us to a close. Thank you very much.